The council meeting. If you'll please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get roll call, please?
Counselor Hughes.
Here.
Counselor Metcalf.
Here.
Counselor McElroy.
Here.
Counselor Prokop.
Here.
Counselor Strobel.
Here.
Counselor Tenbusch.
Here.
Mayor Drinkwine.
Here, thank you very much for that. We are at the first citizen and community comment because I think Ryan Carpenter isn't going to make it tonight is that what I understand? All right. All right, so first on the list, I have Sarah Welton.
Hi, I'm here today as founder and representative of the Dirt Darlings Dance Team. We are a nonprofit dance team that is founded here in Estacada. We also include Sandy Amalala area as well. We are more than a dance team. We are a nonprofit where our profits from our merchandise sales go directly into Sandy Estacada Amalala to support women who have been victims of domestic violence. October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, so this is really important for us to get the community involved, especially here in Estacada, because we do not have the same resources available that Sandy and Malala have. We've had several local women in the past couple of months reach out to me, ask for assistance. We don't have hotel rooms that are safe and secure people feel comfortable in like they do in Sandy and Malala. So for October, we are doing not only just awareness, but as a fundraiser, we would like to see the city, local businesses and residents participate in the purple ribbons. That's the awareness ribbon for domestic violence. I have ribbons for businesses or lapel pins as well for donation, just so that we can visually see the awareness and also support specifically here in Estacada.
All right, I thank you for that. I commend you on this. This is great. I love what you're doing with this, and I think all of us are on board.
Okay, and how can we participate?
So I have purple ribbons that you can put up in your businesses, or you can wear the lapel pins as well, so we can visually see them. People can, we're asking that if they donate at least a dollar for the ribbons, they-
Did we contact you directly then?
Yes, and there's also the Venmo for donation is on the flyer.
Okay, great.
Well, thank you. All right, next I have Jordan Winthrop.
Hello. First off, I wanted to start out with saying we're in Estacada here, which is on the Clackamas River, so that's a big thing to point out. I gave you guys a handout that kind of goes along with what I'm going to say because the visuals are definitely better than me speaking, so it does have a map on the front of it. I'm really happy that the city is dealing with the wastewater treatment plant. It's definitely a much needed item on the to-do list, but I do have an objection to where you guys are putting it. I know it was a hard decision deciding on where to put it, but I didn't ever hear about this being one of the locations on the table. There were many other locations talked about. This had never been talked about. First off, this is the start for the West Cascades National Scenic Byway, so it's a federally designated scenic byway that goes all the way up the river, and that is a starting point that you guys are going to be turning into a wastewater treatment plant. The map here on the front page shows what we have now. It has public restrooms, seven RV parking, seventeen mark parking spaces, but you can fit forty to fifty parking spaces in there vehicles and on busy events and school sporting days, that parking lot is also packed because Timber Park is packed. So on the next page, I am showing you guys where you guys are proposing the sewer plant. This is taking up the entire Estacada portal. This is our only park that is a waterfront park. It is our only visitor designated park. It is on maps that tell visitors to come to Estacada as that is our rest stop. That those maps have been around for a very, very long time directing people to go to that location for visitors. If we want people to come here and enjoy the river, you guys are taking away a major future recreation spot. It might not look like much right now, but a lot of people use it. You're going to be removing forty large trees, all of the green space, the waterfront edge, and our only tourist facing park at this point. On the next page, I'm giving you a possible solution that might work since you guys own this property as well and is adjacent. I know that you guys don't like to hear problems and maybe want to hear a solution. This is just an empty lot that has a couple buildings. It's already cement. There's no green space. You'd be removing half as many trees. Plus, the city lot could be moved to the industrial park, which it could be expanded in the future. So right now, it's kind of landlocked into the river, and that lot should be moved to the industrial park anyway. So why do we have a city storage lot that's waterfront property? Doesn't make sense. So I'm proposing that there could be options besides taking away our park right next door to the park. On the very last page, I wanted you to look to the future. Future generations are going to be wondering what you guys are doing here, and this could be additional parking for the Timber Park and give us tons of additional space for parking for large events like the Timber Festival.
All right, thank you, Jordan. Any questions for Jordan? No? Thank you, sir. Okay. Next, I have James Heem, and I think, all right, so you want me to wait for the second reading? Okay, great. I'll do that. All right. Let me get caught up here, guys. Okay, we're at the consent agenda. You've all had a chance to read it over. Are there any questions? Can I get a motion on the floor for the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
First and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Consent passes, thank you. Department and committee reports. Do we have any around the table that would like to report on their groups? Charity?
So I will report on the school board. Hopefully, I'm not redundant when Superintendent Carpenter does meet with us. But as of right now, I'm sure the community has been made aware that they are recruiting for different committees to for a possible bond in the future. So they're going to be holding some community outreach events, starting with the information campaign, which has already kicked off, and they're going to be continuing to reach out to the to the community. They really want community input since the last bond didn't pass. Currently, they have thirty people, and they're looking for ten to fifteen people to participate per committee, and I believe there are four separate committees. They are also going to be offering yard signs, which will be available soon to advertise, so I would look at the school website just to look for that information. If you want to post a yard sign for advertisement, or you want to get involved, and that's one way that you can advertise to your community. Let's see. For building report, River Mill Elementary completed their seismic upgrade, so a lot more safer for the kiddos. And, oh, I've got a transportation number. Last year, transportation number of students was five hundred and fifty-nine. This year, it is nine hundred and eighty-one. So that is a pretty significant increase. Meals have increased a lot since last year. Enrollment is up since last year, so our town is booming. They had to add another fifth grade class over at River Mill, so they will be purchasing another portable. It is a used portable that they're going to have to refurbish and make it, you know, up to specifications and whatnot. So this is, as we continue to grow, the overall theme was as we continue to grow, they're definitely looking for community input for a bond. There, I know Superintendent Carpenter held a Estacada, kind of a live Facebook Live feed, and I believe it's still up. So if you want more information on that bond and and kind of what they're looking at, you can see information there. And I know that what he's, what the school board is proposing is something very modest and humble, not the Taj Mahal, so. But they definitely need community input to get further direction, as obviously a bond would mean an increase in taxes, and as we're looking at wastewater treatment plant, that's also an increase in taxes. And so, you know, it's just the sign of the times, but it is definitely needed. I will just, you know, my own two cents and just me speaking, looking at the schools and having my own kiddos there, we definitely need, they need some love. So that's what's going on in the school district.
Right, well, have they decided on an amount that they're going to ask for? I know there was-
It was, yeah, I don't have that amount up here, but I believe he's, it was like a hundred and some million. Yeah.
I know it's one fourteen for the high school itself, and then I think the upgrade to the high school, getting it ready for the middle school kids was, I believe, eight million, and then that didn't include the improvements at the elementary school.
So I would say I'm like around, yeah, it is, it is, so, yeah.
That's a heart attack.
It's hard, hard times. So we need community input on that.
Yeah. Any other groups that'd like to report? No? Okay, city manager's report.
All right, thank you. I, first of all, just want to say that Oktoberfest was great. There were quite a few, I shouldn't say quite a few. There was, there was, it was well attended. I was told that the food vendors actually sold out. Is my mic on? It sounds, it must be number twelve. Okay, can, I think that you can hear, I just know people could hear me online. Anyway, so it was a great Saturday, and then I just want to also respond to some comments that we listened to at the public comment time at the last meeting, because I know that it's not really a time for dialogue, but we do, I know you do listen and and assign things to staff to follow up on. So there was a person here from the, an HOA, and they were asking for help from the city to be able to move that forward, and we were able to reach out to them, and the city is able to take over the pathway. They have a couple pieces of property that the HOA is responsible for. One of them is a pathway that would be beneficial to the city and that we could easily maintain, so we can take that for them and that. And then I do believe that they are on the right track to being able to move forward with that. We can't really help them with the contract part of the HOA, but I think they're on the right track and we can take that pathway. So that was taken care of after the last meeting. And then there was not necessarily questions, but some statements made about staff and council not getting along and not working well together. And I just want to say that we feel, staff feels that we do work really well together. We appreciate the the vision and the values that the council sets, and we do try really hard to follow that that guidance in our day-to-day routine. And if, I feel confident that if that was not the case, that you would be able to come to me and we could work things out. So I just wanted to reiterate that, that staff feels that we we have a good working relationship. There was also a comment that someone is on two committees, and it was kind of implied that's not okay, and we do have, there's no rule against being on more than one committee. We do have a rule that was recently is put into the ordinance about someone cannot be on the budget committee and another committee. So you could be on two random committees, but not the one committee and the budget committee. And when that ordinance went into place this past year, there was one person that was still, they still had a part of their term left, so they are still on both of those, but their term will come to an end in March. And so then that that will be no longer an issue as they were grandfathered in under, because they were already in office, not in office, but in their committee position. And so that will resolve in March. So I just wanted to clarify that. And then I just also want to say that I really do highly value all of my staff, and I know a lot of the work that is done is is kind of invisible. You don't always see it, and so I hopefully can find ways to show that value better so that people understand that I do, our folks here work really hard. They take on, it's a small city, so we take on a lot of different roles. And I am planning some mini tours of some of our various departments that will hopefully also help the council to understand, you know, what kind of what goes on. And because I know even to you, you know, unless you've been down at the plants or down, or even up at the library, you know, go behind the doors, you know. So we'll, we'll do some little tours and kind of, I think, do some informational sessions and meeting staff and things. But I do really appreciate the work that they do. And then I would like to also just hand this over to Taylor. She has a little update on the TSP. You have your books there that are for your reading enjoyment, and so I will let Taylor just share a couple of things about the upcoming process.
Thanks. And am I on? I think so, yeah. Hi, I'm Taylor. Also, welcome, Counselor Metcalf, congrats. Yeah, so the draft, what you have here is the draft transportation system plan and in, did I open it? Yep. In the front pocket here, you have a printed out version of the airport-related amendments that I emailed out to all of you. That wouldn't have gone to you, Counselor Metcalf, because you weren't here yet, but now you have all of that, and I can send these to you digitally also. The draft of the TSP is a lot, but a lot of it is not new. Well, it'll all be new to you, but a lot of it isn't new to the rest of you because it's, you know, a compilation of everything we've been working on for almost two years now, but it is still a lot, right? So I just wanted to get this in front of you as early as possible and then remind all of you in the public, who we also want feedback from, of some upcoming dates. Because it's a lot of information, it might be helpful for some people to kind of hear the breakdown and overview from the project consultants. And so three upcoming dates where the consultants will be here for some public meetings are October second for the DEI committee meeting at five PM. October seventeenth, which is, sorry, the DEI meeting on the second is a Monday. Tuesday, October seventeenth is at three to five PM is going to be the final stakeholder group meeting for this project. And then the third one is the council's briefing, which will be on October twenty-third at six PM, so you all will all be here, but that'll also be another time for the public to come and just listen. I think that's everything I had to say about that. Just a reminder that you will also be talking about the airport-related pieces on October ninth for your briefing on that date. I think that's everything I have on that.
And so, and just feel free to reach out to staff, call or email. Sometimes writing down your questions in an email is really helpful and then makes the face-to-face time or phone time really productive.
Yeah, I've, I've said this so many times, and I'm going to keep saying it. It is really helpful. Like, if you do have comments or questions, it's always helpful for us and other folks in the meetings. If we can receive those ahead of time, that way, you know, half the time we have to do some digging and assembling of information, we can get started on that early and come prepared to whatever our next meeting is. So we do appreciate hearing from you and getting your emails or calls or just popping in to say hi. So, thanks, that's all.
Yeah, thank you. Is that everything, Melanie, or you don't?
That's all, yep.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
All right, we are now at council business. City's own change proposal for two hundred Southwest Clubhouse Drive, and that is our community.
Passed out a zoning map because I realized I didn't put that in front of you. Okay, so I'll be brief here, and then I think there are a couple representatives here that could speak to more specifics of their situation. We recently received a business license application for a small computer repair business that would be operating out of the community center property, which is down on Southwest Clubhouse Drive Road. And on this zoning map, if you look at the orange zone at the bottom here, the community center property is the yellow sort of teardrop-shaped property right in the middle of all that orange at the bottom. So what happens is that when we get a business license, my department, the planning division, we're supposed to check that the type of business is allowed in whatever the property's zone is. So we receive this business license, and we go to look at the underlying zone, and it is R1 low-density residential, which does not allow, you know, commercial uses generally unless unless it's with a conditional use permit, which is a special land use application type. So we noticed, okay, well, it's not allowed in the zone unless they have a conditional use permit. Let's go see if they have one on file. They don't. And we're, we're also kind of thinking, that's weird, you know, the community center also isn't a residential use. You know, maybe they had a conditional use permit on file for that. No, they don't. So then we figured, well, they must have been established before the zoning was applied on that property. And I think that is the case for the community center because they've been there for a very long time, and the zoning was probably applied in nineteen eighty. But the the business that was requesting the license is separate from the entity that is the community center. So we need, we need it to work administratively legally, and we don't have, obviously, we don't have the authority to just be like, well, it would make sense there. Let's just sign the business license and hope no one gets in trouble and notices. We're not going to try to do that kind of stuff. So there's this problem. There's this conflict, and it seems to make sense to us that commercial type uses, like the community center that exists there, should be allowed there. That building, that property was never used for residential purposes ever. It has always been, before it was the community center, it was the Forest Service Building, and maybe something before that. I don't remember. Nope, just that. So, so that fact also makes it a little confusing that it ever got zoned residential in the first place. We aren't sure why that happened. We could try to do some digging through the records if you really want us to. But we don't see a reason why it's zoned low-density residential. All of the surrounding properties are zoned multifamily residential or downtown. And so essentially, we're proposing to the city council, we staff, we think it would make sense for that property to be zoned differently, either downtown or at least multifamily residential aligned with what's around it. But downtown would make the most sense in my mind, and basically, this request is if the city council agrees with that, you all could initiate that zone change so that the property owner, the community center or that business owner, doesn't have to pay the cost of a zone change application, which is almost two thousand dollars, and, you know, four or five months of their time going through the hearings. So that's the basic proposal, and I think I'll pause before saying too much more and see what questions you all have.
Go ahead, Mike.
I spoke to Melanie briefly about that. Is it going to have any tax impact on the community center, changing the zoning?
I have no idea how zoning affects taxes. I'm blissfully ignorant.
Change the value of the property, which would change the taxes?
I don't know. Yeah.
So, so how this probably could have happened, as Taylor said, is a pre-existing non-conforming use. If those existed before zoning, and a lot of cities didn't really adopt zoning of this type until the late seventies to mid eighties, that's kind of when it happened. So that, well, could have happened. If the community center is a nonprofit corporation, then they likely would not be paying property taxes on it. If a for-profit venture was to go into that space, then it's possible that they could pay property taxes on that portion of the building that is being used as a for-profit. So it wouldn't be the entire building. It would just be, if the people run, you know, three hundred square feet or whatever it was, it'll be that portion of the building. And this is, this one's a little opaque because you have the community center, which is definitely the pre-existing non-conforming use. But then, like, to what extent they sublet this to other entities over time? I mean, we just, we don't have that kind of history that would allow us to say, well, this is clear within like the purview of that, you know, historic use. And so this is one example where it probably makes sense to clean up the code. The other reason to do it is because, because you would have, because any business would have to go through the conditional use process, that's pretty time-consuming and expensive. And so if someone doesn't know whether they can actually cite their business there for, you know, three to four months, it's, it becomes really hard to, you know, sign a lease and do all those things. And so this is something that could kind of help some of those small local businesses that are just getting started.
I'm fine with the idea. I like the idea of putting it into downtown, but just, just a question. It's surrounded by R3 now. It's an island of of R2, I believe, within the R3. Is R1 within the R3? Is there any problem with making it an island of downtown within the R3?
There's, there's no problem of making islands of zoning in my, I mean, some people don't like that. I think we've had conversations among the council before, former counselor, you know, didn't want to create islands of zoning, but there's nothing, certainly nothing legally wrong with creating an island of zoning. And if you look at our map, there are other islands of different zonings surrounded by other things. So, no, I wouldn't see any problem with that, especially because if there, the concern that I understand when when people are concerned about that is like, oh, we're going to have, you know, a bunch of residential uses, and then if we have this island of commercial zoning, then, you know, there will be commercial right next to residential. Maybe we don't want that. Well, it's already, you know, occupied with the commercial uses that would be going there anyway, right? So I think, yeah, I don't think that's a concern for me.
Any questions on this side?
No.
Well, it sounds rational to me. I mean, I don't see any problem with this request, and I think helping the community center with finance as far as what will cost them to initiate is is a no-brainer. My personal preference is that we authorize this, that we put a motion on the floor to accept this, but that's up to you. So that said, we can probably go to a motion now. If that's okay, how would you like that to read?
Yeah, so it could just be, I move to initiate the zone change process for the community center property.
All right, you've heard the motion. Do I so move? All right, do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, I have a first and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
To the downtown Estacada.
To downtown.
Yeah, I didn't hear that. Okay, sorry.
Yep.
Hi.
All right.
Okay, thanks. And so just, just to, just so no one's surprised when this comes back to you in a couple months and you say, oh, I thought we resolved that. So the process involves, we staff have to draft up the staff report. We have to, you know, check all the state-required boxes and go through the public hearings process. So it is going to come back to you in a public hearing. I'll have to present the staff report, or my staff will, and we'll try to keep it real brief. And so it will come back to you in a few months, probably after the new year, and at that point, you'll officially vote, and it'll come through as an ordinance. So it'll, you'll see this again in a couple months.
And then it has to be acknowledged by the state. So just in case anyone thinks that, yeah. When people say, well, why doesn't government move more quickly? This is, this could be a case study.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, thank you for that. Next thing on the list, I have citizen and community group comment, second time around. I saw Heem walk through the door, so I'm figuring he's here to speak on this. So if you want to come up to the podium? She put you on the spot.
There, that works. Yeah, no, I, I'm talking, I'm here to talk a little bit about zone change, but it's for, for- I'm talking, I'm here to talk a little bit about zone change, but it's for further down the road over at the old forestry center. And a lot of the, a lot of the language of the current code is like, it's vague. So we, I have a, I have a potential tenant who wants to rent some space in the building. And they're you know, the intent of the RC zoning was to promote local tourism, outdoor recreation and the use of adjacent park facilities, river and the outdoor areas. So it has in here outdoor recreational equipment and whatnot. They want to do a dog resort. And here it says like hotels, motels, resorts, but they want to do a dog resort. Is that a special use permit since it's not clearly stipulated within the code? Or it's also a public institution of higher learning. They also plan to do lessons. There was a, a different instruction and competitions with the AKC kennel club. But it's not clearly spelled out. How do we go about you know, getting a yes or a no? And similar to the zoning change on hand, but
and hand this over to staff because you visited this recently.
So it, are they, are the dogs staying there overnight or what are the, what's kind of the, the plan?
Yeah, well, they were just wanting to be like, they wanted to have it so that the dogs could come there, do like a dog daycare slash cafe slash like dog hunting rentals, dog. Like people use a lot of dogs for duck hunting and then there's harnesses, there's flotation devices and aiming it towards dog-related recreation. And so it would, it would meet the intended purpose of you know, the, the attracting local and out-of-town customers while enhancing the natural aesthetics and the adjacent open spaces. But it's not clearly in the, or it's not clearly spelled out in the use is permitted outright. And so I, I don't know where we lie, whether we could get a conditional use permit or whether whether we could spell something out better in the code or how to go forward with all this.
Mayor, you and the council have vast discretion in your ability to interpret your code. This is, this, this code section specifically says includes and, and then has a list, but it's not limited to that list. Hunting is definitely an active outdoor recreational activity in, in the area. So I, I think you would be well within, and you know, the to train a hunting dog, I mean, that's a, that's a four to six month process, frankly. So I, I think you would, you would, you could interpret it to say that this you know, that, that this would be included in kind of that, that recreational tourism piece if, if you were so inclined. But ultimately, it's, you know, a council conversation about what kind of activities do you want in the zone? And you know, but yeah, I, I don't, I can't think of a reason out of hand that this, this couldn't be something that you could say, yeah, that this, this kind of meets that intent, if you were so inclined. Yeah, we would need to see an application.
All right, all right. How does council feel about that?
What part of the building is it in relation to the new daycare center?
It would be, it would be on the opposite side, closest to the big open build right there. But so they'd have access right there to the hiking trails and yeah, like little dog yard and back and so it's, they want to take, make use of the, the walking paths in the park close by and so it's perfect location for, you know, the a lot of people, instead of having kids, they're buying dogs. And so it's yeah, there's a big market for it. People like to pamper their pets.
I love the idea. I just, my only concern was that kids are coming in at the same time, dogs, that people have them on a leash and nobody's getting bit. I, I think it's great.
Those would be completely separate entrances and everything. So there, there's a firewall that splits the facility into two separate occupancies. So they wouldn't be intermingled.
Okay.
What would next steps be then to go forward? Would we just talk, talk to Representative Heen offline and
Have an application?
Do we need a, do we need like a motion from them?
I don't think they can make a motion without seeing an application.
I think, I think we want to understand the full scope of the services. I mean, based on, on what the representative said this evening, it doesn't, I, it sounds like you could, you could make that, but I think until we have that sort of application that you can see.
So maybe from, I'm sorry, uh, from a council standpoint, if we have general consensus that this is something that, that we think this is worth entertaining. So, so we know we're not spinning our wheels on something as well, too. Does that sound?
I think what we're saying here is move forward and we'll see the application and kind of get an idea of what exactly is involved with this, but it, it looks promising. From our lawyer, it says, it sounds like there's no red flags for this process. So I think we'll be all, all on the same page when we come back.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, councillors.
Appreciate you coming forward. Okay, I don't have any more speaker request forms. Are there any online? Oh, wow, it's quite nice. All right, mayor and council reports. So I will start off with you, Mike.
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report?
Report there. We'd like to thank everyone for coming out. It's same period of time for this.
That's right.
Yeah, thank everyone for coming out. Appreciate seeing all the faces out there. It's been nice seeing so many people come and be a part of things. Love to hear your feedback on different things. Wanted to make a comment about some things that were said at the last meeting about rifts between the council and the staff. I haven't experienced that personally. I don't always agree with what the staff may propose as a solution to a problem. But that's why there's six of us up here to be able to vote things in and make sure we're following the wishes of the community. I do know on the private side, not being a councillor, working with the planning department in the city is phenomenal. So we work with the, through my work, we work with a lot of different jurisdictions. And the easiest, smoothest jurisdiction to get through permitting on and to get inspections, dealing with the city staff has been amazing. We're currently working on a development in the industrial park. And in any other jurisdiction, when you have to make a phone call, you leave a voicemail and you wait three to five days for someone to call you back. Don DeRosa with the Public Works Department answers his phone. If we need an inspection over there, he's there in five minutes. And it's been amazing to work with all the staff in the planning department. I haven't worked with a lot of the staff outside of that, but I know that there's been disagreements between city councillors and city staff. But ultimately, if we're unhappy with Melanie, we'll fire her. That's, I mean, we have the authority to do that. So if she's not doing what we want her to do, then we'll take a look at it. But I mean, I haven't seen anything out of the staff that would, I would describe as a rift, other than interactions between some councillors and the staff that, that seemed confrontational. But that hasn't been my experience as a councillor since I've been on. Just wanted to put that out there.
Yeah, I'd like to thank you all for coming out. Regarding those that have emailed me privately, it hasn't fallen on deaf ears. What I would like to say is publicly is that the more people that you bring to tell us and share your thoughts that are sitting in those seats with you or online, the more we can hear from what you want. Our objective is not to make decisions based off our personal beliefs or our personal desires, but to speak in the interest of what the community wants. In that sense, we work for you. Right? And if you guys want to fire us, well, that's fine. You get to do that when our appointments are up. But for those of you that were appointed, excuse elected, excuse me, sorry. But I would like to answer that. I mean, I told you I'd come with solutions and the solution would be that if you want to be heard, please bring those people that have things to say to these meetings so that we can hear from them. And I would ask both professionally and personally that when you step to that podium, that you come from a place with factual information and both respect how communication works effectively is if you can do that from a place where people will listen to you. And when you come up to that podium and you make pointed statements emotionally driven or emotionally charged, that may not be the best way to be received or quite frankly, to get anywhere further than out of your lips. So without blowing hot air up to you, please, if there's things you would like changed, bring people and bring them up, but let's do it from a professional and respectful platform.
Just want to thank folks for turning out as well, too. And council, good discussion tonight. Staff, thanks for getting us ready for this as well, too.
So again, you've heard it all. Thank you guys for coming out. It's nice seeing people in these seats. There were the first few years I was on the council. There were nights where we had like two people in here. There were nights that the only person that showed up was a reporter from Estacada News. So it really is nice seeing everybody show up and come out and, and, you know, be part of what we do here. So it really is nice seeing everybody. And again, this is my fifth year on council and I think that the staff, city staff has done nothing but improve and get better. Their communication with, with council has been, you know, has always been amazing. And I think that, I don't think I've ever seen a real riff other than a couple of interactions with certain councillors. So thank you guys for everything that you do. And I appreciate, and I appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Well, thank you, everybody, for coming. I, I really enjoy seeing the crowd here. It's really nice to be involved. I just wanted to give a little perspective on, or my perspective on what I've experienced in the last nine months. I've never had anyone from city staff push back on me and they've been nothing but helpful. And I've seen no ulterior, ulterior motives. In fact, when I was just a regular resident, I was treated with the same kindness and respect that they show me now as a city councillor. It's the job of city staff to implement the wishes of city council. They do not make those decisions. We do. And also, I think a lot of residents here do not work in Estacada, but that doesn't mean that they don't care about the communities that they serve and their professional lives. Public service is a hard job, but it's something that people have a passion for. And I think city staff does. So, thank you.
Like the other councillors have said, I want to also extend my thanks to you guys for coming out tonight. I know it's not fun to come down in the dark and the rain, but appreciate seeing your faces down here. I, I personally have never experienced anything you know, negative from city staff. They've, you know, with working with Melanie and, and I don't, I don't work, and this is to say, I don't work with the entire staff. So, so I don't know. But in my experience with just working with Melanie, she's always very receptive to my phone calls. I, I haven't received any, any negative, you know, pushback from her or from staff. You know, I think there's a level of frustration with, I, I heard some mention of, of how much, you know, staff gets paid. I think that's, you know, that, that's hard to say because, you know, what are we comparing it to? Are we comparing it to what other staff members make in other cities and states? And, you know, we've got to look at our economy here where, where we live. So, but that's I just, yeah, I, I've personally not experienced any pushback. And they've been very kind and gracious to me. But I, I mean, I know there's just been some rifts in the past with, you know, other, other council members, but I, I feel like that they had been resolved. But if anybody, you know, like councillor McElroy said and, and councillor Metcalf, if people do have issues or problems, please do bring it to council's attention. But really try to back it up with, you know, it's specific circumstances and, and facts instead of just kind of like nebulous statements. Cause then that just, I think that just puts a lot of fuel on a fire and maybe there's reason for it and maybe there isn't, but we, we don't really have anything to go off other than hearsay and what things are being said and spread around on Facebook. So just a little more, you know, just give us a little, something a little more tangible, then we can dig our teeth into it if there's something that really needs to be looked into. But other than that, so far, you know, Melanie's taken all of our suggestions. We've had criticisms for her. She's taken them very graciously. And I know she has worked very hard to, you know, become the city manager that she is and she's growing and learning. So you know, the city's growing really, really fast. And like I had mentioned with the wastewater and school board with these, I think what we're seeing here is a lot of what, what happened in Sandy a few years back. It's just a very fast population boom and we're having a lot of growing pains. And it's come at a time where our country is really divided. So, you know, we've kind of got a bit of a double whammy going on. But like councillor Metcalf had said, come to us respectfully, either, you know, at a council meeting or email, or if you want a phone call, but please dialogue with us. Don't let it be one-sided. Let, you know, have some openness to hear some feedback. Yeah, that's kind of all I have to say on that because I know there's been a lot of stuff kind of circulating the, the socials this week. So but I'm glad we were able to address some of it. Hopefully, we answered some questions and, you know, feel free to email us if, if we didn't. So that's it.
All right, you've heard it from both sides of the council. I think they're pretty open to letting you know how it all works up here. I've worked with city staff. Not always do we agree, but we always get through it. It's been a long time. I don't always feel like we're on the same page all the time. But we work through it. Like I said, there's, there's some slopes. We have different ideas, different councils. Everything passes through here. Everybody starts a project and then by the time they get to it, they've either left, left council or they're no longer here. So we've had a lot of changes that have been hard. And with everybody moving in, it's, it's incredibly hard. I mean, the things that are coming down the pike, the things we're gonna have to accept, not easy for a lot of people. They write me all the time. They call me. They say, hey, what are you doing? You know, all these people are moving in. When are you gonna stop this? It's not that easy. It's not that easy for staff to say no to anybody. They can't. So yes, it is hard. And I feel for staff sometimes, the things they go through and I feel for us for the things we have to go through. But nobody ever said it was gonna be easy to make those choices. So try to be the best you can up here with these people. They work hard for you. I work hard for you. They work hard for you. We're all here for you. So come to us. Like they said, come to us, talk to us, call me, do whatever you want. I'm always accessible. I make myself that way. If you feel there's a problem that needs attention, call me anytime, anyplace. I don't care. That said, I want to thank all of you for coming tonight. It was great having you all on the seats again, like Jerry said. And we wish you a nice evening and a pleasant week. So thank you for that. This meeting is adjourned.